All right, close enough to six thirty. We're gonna get this meeting going. Aaron had some comments he wanted to make before we went to the.
Sure. I just wanted to show everyone what we have going on here up on the screens. Um, this is a poly, it's called a poly cam, uh, it was donated by Mike Pichay from the community. Um, Brian, myself, uh, the select board. Um, and David Trask have all been, um, very, um, helpful in getting this all up and going. Um, Brian and I kind of dealt dialed in the technical stuff along with David Trask who can was our guru on the IT side of things. Um, we're streaming live for the first time, um, from, uh, the town's endeavor here. Uh, and we're gonna see how this goes, we're gonna work the bugs out. Um, we expect to be posting these links on the town's, um, website, which we expect to be, um, uh, going soon here. And, uh, yeah, we'll see how it goes, uh, so we welcome anyone's thoughts and input as we go, go through this process because there's new ground for us.
Excellent, thank you, Aaron, so we'll stand for pledge allegiance.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, for which it stands, under government, individual, liberty, justice.
Alright, thanks folks. So everybody's aware, uh, we're gonna be spending quite a lot of time today, uh, looking at our marijuana ordinance and, uh, that is a step four. Uh, to move some of our other business along, I'm going to move that out of rotation towards the end so that we can get some of the smaller things taken care of. And then, um, so we'll start with the minutes and reviews, um, review the minutes. Does anybody have any questions or comments? All right, well, if we don't have any comments or questions, uh, do we have a motion to accept the minutes as written?
Yeah, most certainly.
All right, are those in favor? Okay, three zero in the minutes. Alright, so step five is gonna be discussing the ARPA funds.
Need a minute.
Well, yeah, they disconnected the camera and now it's that wasn't, I wanted to shut down the screen, but now it's shut off the camera.
Hey.
I, I knew this.
Learning experience, there's nothing to.
We're off the air.
I think we're still on the, I think we're still on the air, but we're, we're not, we don't have video.
Okay. So.
We can leave the mic on. Dave Trapp said he might come tonight, please do.
He's not coming soon enough, obviously.
Fair enough, well, we'll keep things moving along. The one that have the camera that's off.
Let's see, it is streaming, yeah, but that's, that's my, my laptop camera, see? I can fiddle with it here as I go through.
Alright, well. You can go on, I'll just pull YouTube real quick and see if we're streaming, how's that sound?
I think we are again, it says we're still streaming, but.
That's okay, and we knew there was gonna be some hiccups and it was a prow run and we'll go from there, but let's get going on to the ARPA funds, uh. We got quite a bit to do tonight.
Okay. Um, so what we have here is, um, you have a re- a reconciliation of your ARPA funds, I have a newer one in front of you, it's the longer sheet. It's, we're looking at a remaining balance of eighty-four thousand seven hundred and five dollars. There are some unpaid commitments still. Um, the heat pumps, um, window dressers, uh, insulation, water spigot, the rec fields, repair sports fields and basement lighting. Um, couple suggestions for you would be to, um, look at generators, we talked about that. Um, I've been asked to look into cameras, video cameras for security at the, uh, some of the municipal buildings. Uh, and, um, so let me start with generators, um. We know, um, that we're pretty much dead in the water here when we lose power at the town office. Um, I've, you know, I've looked into installing automatic generator, I've also looked into installing either an automatic generator switch at the Riverside Fire Station or replacing the generator completely because of its age. The, well, I think the board should also consider purchasing a generator, uh, for the food pantry, oh, excuse me, for the transfer station. Um, at least maybe one that'll run the office because when he loses power up there, he has no water, he has no flush, that kind of thing. Um, uh, I've checked, uh, Chris asked me check with, uh, to check with Cindy Furlan at the food bank, um. A resident was kind enough to raise about twenty-four hundred dollars for a generator purchase there. Um, the thought would be whether or not the select board is, uh, willing to consider dedicating some ARPA funds to pay for a remain, the remainder of a standby generator over there. So I contacted, after looking at all this, I contacted one of the vendors, um, and asked if can we take advantage of bulk, like a bulk purchase of generators, he said absolutely. Um, so my suggestion would be that we revisit the matter again, I hate to kick the can around, but there's in light of the December eighteen storm, um, these, um, we've rethought what's going on in our community when it comes to generators, so, um, you, it's possible you could also save some money if you, if you buy now as a, as a group, so. Um, I guess that would be the action that I'd suggest that I take is to send out an RFP. Um, I've already talked to one of them, he said absolutely, send us another one, send us exactly what it is that you're looking for, but I need that direction from you as far as what you'd like to see.
Talked about the larger one, two that previously had presented for this place.
Yes.
I'm, I'm in with that.
Yeah, I, at the end of last meeting, I looked and it was like about twenty-five percent more uh, propane per hour for the bigger one at half load. But we talked about maybe just doing a larger tank. But I think what we need to do is ensure that we've got X amount of days, whatever FEMA or whoever recommends between fillings so that we can go independent. Um, and then the other thing, I was here when Brian was trying to get the heating system going and will also need to, I think, the, the heating system did not work with the generator. So just as a mental note on that front, then the last one was, we had power, we had lights, but without power, there's no Time Warner, no Roadrunner, so we had no internet, so it's great to have the power and the lights on, but they were still dead in the water without internet, so just on the to-do list, we've got to look at having some sort of a, a backup plan or a different vendor for our internet, but that's just putting everything together because I was here and start come together and it wasn't perfect, was it, Brian?
So there's, there's a couple of things that I wanted to comment on, I'm in favor as well based on our conversation for the generator here, I think we should reach out to our, um, propane vendor, discuss getting another five hundred gallon tank. So that we have two tanks here. With the fire station in mind, I believe talking to Chief Thompson and, um, a few other folks in the fire department that the generator is from an old state of Maine building that they procured when they built the new station uh, over years ago. And it's on a manual switch. So if power goes out and somebody from the fire department has to go down and start the generator up, I think at the very least, we should consider putting an automatic switch in uh, so that they don't have to do that.
With the current game.
Well, I think that's one option. Or the other option would be to replace the whole system uh, with a new generator. I don't know what you guys' thoughts on that, I think, what did you get for a quote, just kind of ballpark for the, the switch?
He said it would be about two thousand.
Just as rich.
Yeah.
How many KW is the one over there?
I don't know, I don't know either.
Well, as the, the next question is, as the building's gotten bigger all the time with expansions and there's different needs, is what's there sufficient that they need bigger?
I mean, that can be part of the RFP.
When the chief's input is to, if he thinks it's the right size. And, uh, I mean, it's an old generator, so, you know, it's like putting a new transmission in an old car. Sometimes you don't have a choice. I mean, for me, it's, I don't know, I mean, a lot of equipment there.
Since the people that we want in this building, so near down Riverside Station. In school, I would think so.
We kind of did that thing, we didn't do it, but they did it with the, um, heat pumps at the historical, they had different vendors to move different presentations. I mean, it wasn't all about the dollar, it was also about the package and the finish and the aesthetics for the old building, so.
You know, as far as the food pantry is concerned, that was one of the, uh, areas when we first got the ARPA funds that we could use the money for initially when we reached out to them. About two years ago now, they didn't have, uh, they had a lot, they had enough money, they weren't, they weren't interested, but I think now, um, with their issue with generator and really the need for people that need food, I think it's, uh, something that we should consider.
Interesting. Yes. Again, it's, it's a small scope, they only got a couple of refrigerators, freezers and lights.
Maybe AK or something, I don't know, it'd be enough to.
Same guy who was.
So at this point, we're looking at maybe an AK for food pantry. It's a question mark for size at Riverside.
I decided about twenty for here, yeah, I think, I think both, folks that we got were twenty thousand for the one hour colors.
Was there, yeah, just those three or what, oh, in the trans, in the, in the transfer station, I think for the transfer station, we're looking at a portable one more than a okay, but I don't know, I mean, I would.
What would be the point? We want a transport station. So if the office is open, but the packers are not.
Depends on what's, depends on the time of day, depends on what's going on over there. Um. Now, um.
I have a question.
I, alright, I, I was just gonna continue with, like, like, well, I mean, I, I mean, if, if, if it's, if it's a slow day kind of thing and there's not, you know, you, you don't need to run the comp, and you're not running the compactor a lot, I guess, you could still accommodate the public and have them come in and.
Do the slip, you open top.
Yeah.
Like you did.
Um, I, I just, I think it gives us more, uh, uh, you know, um. There are some things that we can be doing over there. Needs power for the, and then computers and, you know, heat, that's, and, yeah.
I'm not sure, to be honest with you, uh, how much KW would be required to run a, a rotor phase. Well, rather than rotor phase, what I was gonna throw out there is what about seeing if the state has any three-phase surplus units, that would be big enough, but you wouldn't, what you would do is instead of running a rotor phase, you would just run a generator straight in with a, like a thirty, forty transfer switch. So they could conceivably run a generator and have the right kilowatt to run that compactor. So if we've got the monies, maybe Aaron could see if state surplus has anything, that's something there where it's not quite as crucial, but if it would work, it would be great, you know? So that was just a thought of price should be right.
I know nothing about that type of stuff, so I.
Usually find the bigger stuff from the state, it's gonna be three phases, it's gonna be bigger stuff.
Alright.
Just a thought, I mean, we could find out how big it is and look at pricing and owning or something, just if we have monies in it, you know, because that would be a, I think it'd be great to have because we have a lot of cleanup when obviously that stuff happens. So it's a time where it'd be good to have that resource versus they open up and then everybody swamps and.
What are your thoughts on that, Mike?
We're getting beyond our technical capability. To get, to get there for, to do the survey.
As far as like.
The one we hear should be done.
Yeah, but if we can get it cheaper by buying multiple. I think we should consider that, I, I'm a little happy, had to look. Put a lot of money into the transfer he made into you right now in, in light of us moving, reviewing with a major overhaul. Right? Is the, is the meter? Is the meter on, um, on the building? At the, at the recycling building? So there's a meter, isn't there a meter, both, both are just, just one meter for the entire transfer station?
No, there's one over by the compact, on that bill.
Little building.
No, that, yeah, the little building between compact is one there, I'm not sure about the other.
Alright, I was just thinking, because they, you can buy a switch called general, general switch. And that goes right on the meter box. And then you put the meter on top, so it's a spacer between, then you just plug into that, then. Alright, well, we can have, uh, we can table, uh, that till the next meeting and then do, probably, probably the vendors would need thirty days.
Yeah. Sure, I think it's reasonable.
So that we'll talk about, I mean, they're not gonna be able to do it till the spring anyways.
Yeah. Well, that's true.
And, I mean, I think, I think we're on board with, with at least putting a generator at town office, so it's. Alright.
To reiterate, as you earlier promised, ARPA funds have been committed this year.
End of the year, right?
Used up by twenty-six.
Correct. Yeah, um, so we're gonna table till the next meeting, what do we need between now and then for discussion?
For the generators?
Yeah.
Well, I don't think we're gonna table it for the next meeting, if you need thirty days to allow them time to respond.
Okay.
With an updated quote, so we want.
Okay, we are sending up our fee.
To talk about it in the first meeting in February.
Our fee for. Are people for generators?
Yeah, well, I don't, depends on what kind of generator we want to do for the transfer station.
We need this one, do a small one for the office.
Right, but that can be portable.
Yeah. Just see if they have it, I.
But I, well, we got that ten K that we use here. Right?
Yeah.
So town office. Yeah. Right.
Well.
Yeah, because they got electric heat too, so that adds.
Yeah. Okay, so take the transportation.
Food pantry, the Riverside. So I guess the Riverside would be a two-part bid, one would be just doing the transfer switch and the other would be doing the transfer switch and replacing the generator. Alright. Anything else you wanted to tell you, you had more.
Yeah, I, I sure do, yeah. Um, so I also looked at cameras, um. It would be about twelve thousand to, um, uh, look at, um, two cameras for the transfer station, the town office and the public works garage.
So, and I was the one that kind of started this conversation with, with Aaron. Um, I think we've really taken security strong enough with some of our public assets. Um, I think, uh, you know, we, we have a lot of money in, in vehicles with the fire station and the public works and, and, uh, equipment here that, that, uh, that we need to be careful of. Uh, particularly at the Riverside Station, a lot of families use that to exchange their children. And I thought it would be, um, you know, divorced parents from folks in the parking lot, um, it might be worth just having a camera pointed towards the parking lot for for a little bit more security. So I mean, I, I obviously am in favor of, of doing this, so, but, uh, I wanted to at least get your folks' thoughts.
Have a physical camera installed. What does it feed and who monitors it?
Assuming it be this cloud in, in most cases and cameras today, but I'm sure, but I suspect we could if we wanted to have a centralized location to store it if we chose to. Uh, no, I was thinking more or less not, more or less, um. I guess it'd be a retroactive, not proactive, it'd be there so that if we needed to go back and look, we'd, we'd be able to review anything that was happening, so it wouldn't be twenty-four hour surveillance.
A lot of them have, like, a forty, sixteen channel hard drive DVD that does continually back like three or four days. Um, they can get more, just as what you want to pay.
Do a terabyte.
Yeah.
I guess considering you're going, that overrates, you know?
I mean, with the number of post calls at the transfer station, not to mention George has found people in there early in the mornings and stuff, it's it's definitely there. You know, we've had vandalism, there are concerns over at the rec fields, which we haven't talked about doing that, but it's around us at this point, so. We had a tree stolen at one of the fire stations, so obviously things happen. It would have been nice to have a film at least, you know, knowing when and somewhat of a description. I, I think the biggest thing would be rather than paying for a service would be to have the ones that have enough recording um, and have it someplace hardened on site where they can easily go in and, you know, trash it and get to things. Um, and then some of them do have the ability to notify you, like if it sees a person or vehicle that if the chief or whoever wanted to know, they could, but, um. So we're talking transfer station here and the garage for the three.
And two fire stations.
Two fire stations. Something north building.
This one you come from?
We have a motion to have, uh, town manager get, uh, hard, hard figures. We have second, are all those in favor? Three O.
Rick was second?
Yep.
Um. Okay, so I, I do have the hard fi, hard figures.
Okay.
Um, um.
Damn, you're good. Just like.
Um, yeah, I, um, there's not a lot of people in this, this business, um, so I have one figure. It was twelve thousand four hundred dollars, um, and includes, um, four channels standard, uh, POE NVR with advanced analyt, analytics, there's no hard drive. That's five of those, um, internal storage, tho- those are five hundred dollars apiece. Uh, internal storage, five at a hundred and fifty. A, there are four, looks like four megapixel, um, IP bullet camera analytics, supports line cross motion tampering and audio detection. Night color delivers color and improved bright, uh, improved brightness in ultra-light scenarios. Uh, built-in mic, those cameras are two hundred and forty dollars a piece. Um, the, there is, uh, ten, so this would be at the, with the two cameras, the thought was camera on the front door here, camera on the back door, camera at the transfer station, people coming in and out, and a camera on the hopper, and then another camera on, um, the public works garage coming in into the building or into the facility out on the pumps and on the equipment that's in the backyard there. So it's, it includes cable, um, a shelving, an Echo gear equipment shelf and total labor would be forty-eight hundred dollars, miscellaneous parts, hundred dollars, twelve thousand four hundred eighty-two. It was basically boils down to about seventeen hundred bucks, um, for, at one camera. So for one camera, it's about seventeen hundred dollars and then it's, he said it'd be like another like about twenty-two hundred to do two, which is, he's already there.
The base units that they're selling, are they expandable up to four channels or four cameras, is that my?
That's what he said, yeah.
Okay, so we could add cameras.
Four channels. Mm-hmm, yeah. Hey there. Uh, to install, install a, a video recording for, um, security. So it's.
Transfer station.
So it's, uh, a hundred dollars, uh, excuse me, five hundred dollars for a four-channel standard P, POE NVR with advanced analytics, that's, those are five hundred dollars.
Okay.
Uh, we need, we'd need five of them for five buildings.
I thought, I thought you were talking seventy, ninety dollars for a camera.
Yeah. So I, speaking of cameras, I pulled the cord of the poly cam and it, that was it, and then I lost screaming, so. Yeah, so anyway, operator error, but we're, we're back to the old way doing it right now. It's okay, um. So yeah, that's, that's the breakdown, it's basically, David, it's twelve thousand four hundred dollars to install two cameras at five buildings. So that includes the fire stations too. Ten cameras, sir, yes, sir. Ten illuminated, illuminated, uh.
I'm just questioning, because I have thirty-five cameras, you're cool.
They're, they're, they're two hundred and forty-dollar cameras. Yeah, bullet camera. It says IP, it says, uh, IllumiView IP four eight NC four megapixel IP bullet camera with night color.
We certainly can come back and see it back in a.
What's that? Yeah, because the, the link is gone. Yeah, I would love it, Zita.
It's just.
No. That is, I don't know if I can read, we're going into a new one where it has, we do a new one. Is it a request?
Oh, well.
That could come out.
Yeah, well. I need to call the HDMI because I didn't need the screen.
Doug. If they go away for work and they're installing thirty cameras, could you give any consideration for how a camera here inside the building? Transaction. I mean, uh, and to me, that's I mean, the, the outside's pretty nice at night and, you know, nobody around.
Yeah, I think it's probably important, more important to have one here than, I mean, that's.
Well, I don't think.
I'm not concerned about the bad.
Couple of words around, you know, I mean, we need to have the appropriate, you know, the description you gave, gave is perfect, but I think the one thing is visiting. Inside.
Yeah, inside here, people doing transactions in here in the event of a problem.
Or even one in this meeting room.
So, and earlier you stated, we've got four channels on those units.
Right.
Could easily add cameras later on.
Yeah.
Later on, it's hard to come vice.
Well, I just don't want to drag it out too long as far as, you know, you can add on, you can tweak it, I mean, we know we need security. We've, we've talked about it, the transfer for a long time, just with near misses and what they're the buildings, you know, there's been issues of the way other places in town and at fire stations with vandalism and whatnot, so. I mean, we put them in, the cost of adding a camera is a huge amount of money.
Um, that's.
Back in business.
Okay.
Worked up, you need to, that's a good one.
He could, he's got the quote, that's the only thing, he's got the RFP, so we'd have to do it as an add-on.
I'm just, you know, the same thing as the generating, we're taking that down a little, what was finally, it's come to the point of making fights. Security never did it done for.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I hold that. I can leave it. Guess I could leave it on for people to. So what's uh?
You can do it.
All right, so.
If you need any, uh if you wanna. Talk to me at all about Cameron, go for it. Like I said, I've got thirty-five. I called on one to the group. And um. Uh I'm not volunteering, but uh you wanna, if you want your inside, I'm where to put them, how to put them. Those types of things.
Thanks, thanks, David.
So what's our pleasure for cameras?
But Aaron made the comment that there weren't many people out in the field doing this, correct?
Yeah.
I mean, I'd make a move to go with it, other than talk the contingent possibly adding one more camera here.
You feel strongly enough on that? Right? Okay, so we'll need a motion to uh waive the payment policy. For a second, I. All those in favor? Okay, now we need a motion to make a purchase of the camera.
Make a motion, purchase the camera.
All those in favor? Three oh. Yep. So we're down to. Sixty-eight thousand. All right, Public Works.
Sorry, yeah, oh yeah, Public Works, okay, um. So we're needed some uh repairs of the pad that holds the fuel tank at Public Works, Public Works Garage, um. It's cracked and it and it could only be filled halfway. Um so that's an issue we need to deal with, um the work can be done in house. The board should consider replacing the fuel pumps when this work is being done, um. The reason why I say that is both of both are old, we have um gas and diesel over there, public um. Public Works uses it, the school bus uses it, police and fire. I would like, I I went down this path when I was looking at um. Internal controls and the fuel over there and how we keep track of that. And um. Thought was as well, maybe we look at getting some card readers and then we're looking at the pumps or oh geez, these pumps are pretty antiquated. Maybe it's just best to rather than. Put card readers on it to replace pumps. So basically, um. What's happening now is people go into Public Works Garage. They get the key to operate. The pumps.
And they turn the pump on inside.
Oh, that's it, okay, turn the pump on inside and then um. And then there you go, uh then they handwrite, you know, how much they're using. Um that information is and and you had questions earlier about. You know, why we're crediting certain accounts with fuel, for example, that's that's the reason why is. We don't have that information yet, so the the best thing to do is to hit the line, the fuel line, and then we allocate it to the different different accounts.
To school.
The school, yes. Yeah.
Yes.
And so, um. Uh I. Had it, um and the other thing is too is that it's just it's old and so one of these days you're not gonna be able to find parts for these things. Uh like anything, um so, um. One vendor has visited the site already. And um I expect another to stop in next week. I also plan on um calling. One more, maybe two more depending. Uh as well, trying to get three quotes on that, um so. Uh I would ask, um. You know. Uh I I guess I'm not looking for any action tonight, it's just that I I expect I wanted to. I've started that process so I can bring you those proposals for your consideration with the potential of using ARPA funds. For those purchases.
You think Brian uh? A key tree would would work if we went with a um. Less sophisticated system. Where. Key, the specialized key would power, you know, depending on it would be assigned to a specific vehicle. So wherever it is on the tree, you turn it on, it turns the pump on, it keeps track of the gallons. Uh behind the panel. And then we could do consider uh using something like that with replacing. The system.
Well, that's pretty much the same as the academy, you just have to strike the card and you punch in a code and assign a. Each person has a code. You know, I D number and then they assign to where the vehicle goes to. And then also it's also hooked up to wifi with the receiver in the. Public Works. Or even and even like here, they can, end of the month, they can. Get the information off the bill, whoever.
I'm okay with that, I mean, I'd like to see see access to the Public Works Building Limited to. To just the Public Works employees to one. I mean. Think we gotta look at all options too, I mean. Unless we're gonna budget it. The for upcoming. Season. We have. Sixty-eight thousand dollars left, so what's it gonna cost to? To upgrade that system? I don't know if it was earmarked for anything by the building. But. So what are you looking for? Just just the approval to to?
I I'm just giving you a heads up, I'm not looking for action and just. Keep that in mind, um I expect to bring that back to your table here and for further discussion. Uh lastly, with our book, um. This story, I met with the Historical Society, I met with John Rose and Doug Phillips regarding the. The needed maintenance and improvements over the Historical Society, they wish to complete. Installing L E D lighting to two back basement ru- uh rooms and replace the ballasts. Um you may recall, John was kind enough to pay for some of that cost out of his pocket. Uh for this endeavor and um the town paid for the materials. Um. We have three hundred and fifty dollars that wasn't used from that money, um. Who allocated for the project earlier. Uh he would like to put that remainder towards fifteen hundred dollars in cost. To complete this project and allocate eleven hundred fifty dollars in ARPA funds.
So we're responsible for a lot of the maintenance of the building, I think. No brain to me to.
It's just the beginning. It was a.
Excellent. So. Let's give you know, especially we can have it through what we have left in the money's. Rick, you have any things to comment about the? The L E D lighting?
No. It makes sense, it's more efficient.
All right, do we have a motion to accept the recommendation of town manager uh? Submitted by John Elrose.
Seven eleven fifty?
Yep.
Make a motion, accept.
All those in favor? That's fine, is what it is.
Who seconded that?
Uh Mike did. All favor.
Okay.
Maybe have a. Want to discuss the finance report?
Sure. They have finding before in front of you, um. Uh so well, it's expensive for really, um overall, I'd say the town has done very well with spending over the past six months, we're happy through their fiscal year. Um. Administration, public works, solid waste and road work are all around fifty percent spent. Road paving is about seventy percent spent. Which. Which is. Good, cuz we've completed. Having. I would like to talk about paving. Uh soon, perhaps at your next meeting. Uh I know Brian has some ideas and um. So there. Um like discuss that again, um. First responders is fifty percent percent spent, fire department forty percent, public safety fifty percent. Capital improvements nine percent, recreation forty-three percent, library fifty, utilities forty, cemetery is forty-seven. General assistance forty, assessment forty-five. Social services eighty-two, miscellaneous eighty-seven, county tax a hundred, debt service a hundred, education fifty percent, miscellaneous is seventy-six percent. Um not seeing anything unusual here, um I might get asked some questions about, um. The the credits, um and. I I touched on that earlier, um essentially. There we get some bills that come in, we're waiting for documentation, things like that, most logical place to put fuel for a fuel expense, for example, will be put in fuel. And then journal entries are made, that's why you're seeing credits there, cuz the journal entries that are made to allocate those um expenses to the correct. Uh departments or lines.
Clarification.
All right, is there any other comment on the financial expense report? All right, moving on. Discuss public comment, select board meetings.
So this was tabled last time, it was asked to bring it up again tonight, um. Uh one of the uh because one of the questions was, can a? Um if the select board member was to um participate in a um select board meeting remotely. Um can they, will their vote count? And yes, according to MMA legal, that is, that would count. So. That's pretty much all I got, I'm just following up with with you on that.
Okay, so we have, we have a uh policy in front of us that has been vetted through our attorney. Been recommended by town manager. So. Um. Looking for some uh discussion on uh on the board as far as. How to proceed.
We need to have something in place, you know, the attorneys, you know. Two roads, this was a much safer road. We visited down the road, there's. Or can you change modifications?
Mike, do you have any comment? Okay, do we have a motion?
Make a motion, accept it, Richard.
We have a second? Okay, all those in favor? Three oh. So we have a policy. Out of the parking lot, in house.
There's a storm coming.
All right, so Spirit of America Award, uh. Typically is something that that we don't advertise until close to the year. So I'd like to refrain from. Having a public discussion on that if we can, I know it's taboo, Mary, but just try to keep it secret as long as we can.
This is presented with the committee.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
Recommendations from the. I have people make recommendations.
Right now, right now, if you'd like, yeah, you could send it to me or. Now's a good forum.
Where the consideration for sure?
Taking care of your moment.
Thanks, Alan.
All right, so we have uh town reports. Did have a question. Yeah, issue with manager report? Brian, what is what what has caused you to have to go to the transfer station more often to pack? What are you packing?
In their back of the boat.
Yeah, but what it what is it that you're packing down there? The vault, there you go.
I've been after, I I drop off at Thanksgiving. And you still haven't got a pick, I was there just a couple days ago and I told me need it.
Which one?
What's your uh? What's your assessment of this? Twenty-five year old. Ease of equipment.
Lack of maintenance.
Yeah.
Spent a lot of time in it.
Yeah, but this is what. This is what they're probably lacking me.
Grease is cheaper than steel.
It's um. I think that was the only question I personally had for the reports. Are you all set, Mike? Do we have a motion to accept the reports?
Make a motion.
Second. Mike, okay, all those in favor? Three oh. All right, now the meat of the meeting. The marijuana. Business ordinance, so.
Um do we wanna do other items or no?
We can if you'd like.
Okay, just just cuz I didn't wanna forget, um. Uh so the town has three, I'm gonna talk to you about uh three things here, um one is the town has um. Three share certificates. Certificate eleven. Uh has a balance of a hundred and fifteen thousand nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars. The maturity date is twenty twenty-seven. With a yield of five hundred and twelve, uh excuse me, five point twelve percent. Certificate twelve. Has a balance of fifty-five thousand four hundred and four, maturity date is twenty twenty-six. With a yield. Of four point zero seven. Chair certificate number thirteen will ma- mature on January nineteenth. The mature balance is a hundred and eighteen thousand five hundred eighty dollars. The current dividend rate is. Two point eight percent. With the current annual percentage yield. At two point eight eight percent. The last renewal date was on January nineteenth, twenty nineteen. So the best rates that Main Saving now has is a six month certificate paying five percent. With a yield of five point twelve percent and their fifteen month certificate paying five point two five percent with a yield of five point three eight percent. So. Unless you have something in mind um to use this money right off, I recommend you go with the fifteen month based on. The short time period. And the comparison to the other certificates length and the yield. Um you have a again. Um. You're locked in with a um. Uh certificate eleven with a yield of five point twelve till twenty twenty-seven. Uh this is fifteen months, so. Like a good move.
Any discussion? Okay.
We wanna get in the same position, we had two years. Using money.
Yeah. Okay, do we have a motion?
Oh, they're on recommendation, three months.
Second. All those in favor? And Aaron, I I have a question and you know, I I admit that finances at at this level are not in my wheelhouse. Um the money that we have set aside in a C D from the purchase, uh sale of the house over on s- s- South Stanley Hill Road.
Yep.
Are we allowed to? Move that into a more advantageous market like this?
It's an escrow now, it's not paying much.
No. I could check into that for you. It's good, that may be a good idea. I think per per perhaps do the same thing.
Yeah, so small numbers.
Maybe take that, they manage the five plus percent.
I mean, as long as it's something that the principal's not at risk. You'd be fine, I think, with one of the higher interest rates, it's available and worst case. You pay the penalty on the interest, which which right back where you started anyway, so that'll win win.
Okay, I will, uh. If if. Uh so I won't be seeing you between now and the nineteenth. So if. If I can do it, I my assumption is that's. I have the board's blessing to do that.
We do.
Okay. All right.
Do you need a motion? Are you okay with consensus?
Well, we don't know if we can do it yet, so.
Fair enough. Thanks for answering that. Uh the only thing that uh. On my list that I. Wanted to discuss was uh. Have we looked into putting a? Have we looked into putting a, a credit card machine at the transfer station? Or some kind of like a square or?
No, no, I can do that. Um. So, um, my experience has been that the, the banks are. Pretty happy about giving us those things at no cost. If it gets money over them faster. But I, I don't, I don't know how things are here, I can, when I talk about the uh South Stanley Hill uh. Money, I can bring that up as well.
And the town's policy is that the uh, the user, at least for the town's fee, I believe.
Yes.
For the convenience.
Right, there's no fee to the town to, to use a credit card at the user spends.
Okay. Right. It says we come more into a cashless society, but. All right, so moving on to the marijuana business ordinance, so.
All right, I got two more.
Okay.
Um, I just want to announce that we have a new ACL, I am talking about the name Joshua Barnes, he's the ACL over in China. I was forward to working with his, his background and I think we're fortunate to have him. Um. And I do want to follow up with you about the December eighteenth storm. Um, I have submitted the information to Kennebec County Emergency Management in hopes that we'll receive some monies. Um, for, um, from the December eighteenth storm. Um, we estimate so far about twenty-six thousand dollars in costs. That's with the fire department, public works, um, the school. Um. I'll keep you updated as that develops, um. We'll see what happens, um, but I have met the deadlines and got everything in for them, um. I also met with superintendent schools to follow up with him to review how operations went over at the warming shelter. Um, that was, my understanding is that was kind of the first we've done that, so. Um, I think overall went pretty well, we looked at, um, we did get some good feedback from the public. Uh, the generator did power the building well, um, eighty-six people. Used it, place to warm up, charge electronic devices, grab a warm meal. And I will be working on a guide, um, that I've received. Um, that will help with future operations, so there is basic checklist, things like that. Um, I'm also working with the resident to build up a bank of volunteers, so we're ready, ready to mobilize people and also. Gets, get some training for those people, so they, you know, have some background when it comes to how, how these operations work. They do, I, I have it, I have, I have it from Mima, um, but we want to tailor it to our particular situation. Yeah, yeah, and. Yeah, so. Uh, I will follow up with you on that as well. And that's it. Well, I uh.
I'll just mention one, one more thing that Aaron and I have been working on. Um. As you guys know, I bring up our ambulance provider regularly. Um, they held meetings. Uh, for everybody and the stakeholders that want to do attend. But all the meetings were at noon time. I don't know if you were aware of that or not. So I was not able to attend, so I sent a very pointed email to their interim director, Chris Mitchell. Who responded, um, that he wanted to meet. So. Uh, in the meantime, our rescue chief. Attended one of those meetings. And the outlook is poor. And potentially forty-five the year after. And. If there's real concern. That. Four or five communities now are looking. Either go on their own. Which then will also make the pricing unstable if that comes to fruition. So the reality for basketball is we need to consider a plan B. And uh whether or not we get through this year unscathed. Uh, more than the twenty-five per capita that they proposed to us. Um. It's not yet for certain that, that there will be. Situation, you know, a decent situation next year. For the twenty-five, twenty-six.
So we've got two factors, the one would be. When the cost per capita. Becomes more than doing it ourselves. Then we look at doing it ourselves as an option. In fact, it would be, or if they completely zone defunct. We have to have. So either way, we need to be at least trying to get an idea on. What you're basing.
It's about two hundred seven thousand. Twenty-five is a hundred seven thousand, so. Um. Even at forty-five per capita is cheaper. Than us staffing our own ambulance. Um, I think a twenty-four-hour paramedic truck with an intermediate partner, just salary benefits, we, in a neighborhood of seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. Just no, that's. That's just for the employees. To staff a twenty-four-hour truck seven days a week. So that's, that's payroll and benefits. So that's about eighty-two dollars an hour. Um, it, it, that's my math, so don't.
But it's, it's, we got numbers to work with. But the other factor is if there's going to be any. Evidence that they decide that they're going. Obviously, so, you know, if they would shut their doors.
So I mean, I don't think Aaron nor I have. They haven't come out and said that that's happening, but, I mean.
And if that happens, then the cost is really irrelevant. Unless you can find somebody else to subcontract.
And right now, there isn't uh. There isn't available uh resources in the area to cover. I know, uh. Chief Mayon has been. Uh, having conversations with, with communities around to see what our backup plan was, I think. If something emergent was to happen, we'd be set in the short term. But it's, it's not, it's not a solution, a long-term solution, so. Yeah. So.
Or say they do fall for sharing. Is there anything to kind of save some money for the town, is to pay them like hourly?
We, we don't pay them upfront anyways, as it is.
I thought you paid them right.
Thank you, that, that paid him today, I think, sixteen thousand dollars. I mean, I think. For me personally, I would, I, I want them to survive and, and, you know, I. I think it's for the best for the communities, uh. But, you know, that's just the reality of where we are post-COVID. Um. And there's a lot of factors that, that have gotten them to where they are, and some of them are outside of their control, so. I'm still in favor of supporting them, but it's. We have to have a, a parallel path here.
I just.
Go ahead.
If they lose. Then the response. So at, at what point? You know, life versus. They end up showing up very minutes late. Somebody with an arterial bleed. We all know that, you know, arterial bleeding. So that's already a sketchy situation. Five minutes. Or so before heart damage. Brain damage. So again. Where do we find that? Yeah. Can't imagine something waiting. That's in driving.
I don't disagree with you, and, and this is a statewide problem, I mean, the, the state did a blue ribbon study. They initially had commented about, or at least earmarked seventy million dollars. To help uh throw some money at this problem, and the legislature only, uh, I believe, supported thirty million dollars of that money. And the legislature hasn't released the funds yet. Um, I think in the most recent reports, uh, Chief Mayon had commented that he's not seeing a significant delay in response. Um, so. From Delta. I, I thought maybe I misunderstood his, his report, I thought he's, he had commented that, that he wasn't seeing. Uh, significant delay. As of yet.
And we backed up and just clarify something for my medical ignorance, so. What she's describing are things that, nothing that our um volunteer staff, we currently have, could in any way, shape or form help bridge time or buy time.
Well, they could, but it's still. If you have. A rig has more. Equipment and ability. Way to get person to.
Yeah.
Where the other life-saving endeavors can. You know, but right now, if Delta's in Augusta, there's no rig available. We, they, they have weight, but it's from us, it depends where it is. So it could be fifteen. At this point.
There's different, different uh markers too that the state follows when it comes to this and, and. What you say is warranted, you know, it is, is appropriate and. Uh, things that we're considering as well, you know, it's things that we keep an eye on. Have had.
There's nothing that I have the ability. Huge bank account that I can say, okay, here's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You know, get away again. Staff, but. I worry for those people who don't have needs to get to us. And it's a life situation. The reality is, I think.
That is true.
Not to be the, you know, the negative person, but. Um. I've seen.
I just think right now we're at a point of, of determining. What the best, you know, just getting it on the radar and the horizon.
And, you know. I guess. To what I asked earlier about our first responders and helping out, it sounds like we may need to at least look at. In preparation, if it does become more and more applicable, many times, or if we have to do our own group, which is a smaller group. Looking at maybe what we could do for more first responder supplies, equipment, logistics. Um, to gap them.
Danger report. Has to be considered. Increasing their license. Yep, to supply more of the immediate. Until somebody come along and do this transport, but we're not licensed to do transport.
Well, your basic love to see. Defibrillators.
You want to go to the advanced level.
And it's, because it's volunteers, so if they're working, whether they're not in town, it's.
It's a two-tier system, and if they're, you know, it's entering its tenth year right now, since it started in town. And uh. You know, if their, if their people aren't working or if they're available, a lot of the folks that are on the rescue squad, at least when it started. All worked full-time in EMS, I think now that it's a little bit more diverse. A population that, that participates, but yeah, it's not, it's not in the true sense that we pay somebody to be available, it's. And they're licensed at the, at the first responder level, permitted to the basic level. Um. So this. You know, there, there's, it's a big commitment to go to the intermediate level, because uh by rule, uh, as things have changed. You have to have a, a vehicle in town. That supports all the equipment that, um, that a param, that a paramedic level ambulance would. Would have. We do, Jim Cassidy and uh PMA are, Chief Mayon, they're, they're paramedics. But. Do you have a comment there?
No.
Uh. I just think it's something to consider as, as we go into budget. You know, I think at, at one point, one of the considerations with uh setting aside thirty-five thousand dollars for a combination vehicle. With the fire department last year was, was to. Have a vehicle available for. Um. To store. Thing at the, at the intermediate level. Or the advanced level, and if you recall, we used some of the opera funds to purchase, um. A monitor, so that took that piece off of. So. You know, picking away at it, but.
To the new level that they want to go to. Will be advanced airways, show new meds, new cardiac arrest meds, IV placement. Boys come.
Yeah, but a lot of, you know, some of these things. It's to get.
Was your compliment, reference to your father-in-law? All right, so that's all I had. Anybody else have any more comments before we dive into ordinances? All right. So. We've had this ordinance in place for three years, and we. They made adjustments to it once. Uh. Not this last year, it was the year before last, uh. Maybe Rick was on the board. Just before Mary retired, we realized that, um. We had no way that, that, that we. The ability to. To charge a fee to landlords for some of these buildings and, and the resources that were being used by the CEO. In order to make sure that the buildings are up to par, uh, weren't, weren't fair, I guess. So what the, the thought was, is uh. Twenty twenty-two, that, um, what we, what the, what we wanted to do was. For every licensee on the property, the landlord would also have a mirror license fee. Uh, right now, the way it sits is the entire building is under the landlord, and then, so, so if there's four licenses in the building. Then there's five license fees being paid. And, um. We had to go to a full-time code enforcement officer to handle the increase. Uh, in investigations for the code enforcement officer at the time, and we wanted it means to subsidize the code enforcement officer pay. Because of the marijuana. So that was the idea to adjust, uh. The fee structure, which needs to make a change in the ordinance. In the meantime, uh, through conversations with different people that work in this kind of field. Um. There is, and, and, folks need to be on, on board with this too, I guess, but there is a. The, the license ordinance only covers those, in my interpretation of the ordinance. Only covers those grow operations that were approved before this. Amendment was done in twenty twenty, twenty-one. That, uh. The eight total. For over a thousand square feet of grow space, but that doesn't capture any of the caregivers. That are allowed to grow five hundred square feet of grow space with a thousand feet of immature plants. So those, we don't have any, any, any sayovers, they get licensed, they can set up shop. In town. And they also can sell their product to folks that are licensed. Uh, with, you know, by a position to make. For their own needs.
If they were renting, though, we would still be able to charge their landlord for the renting.
There's nothing in. So, um, what I'm recommending is. Um, I think we should know where these folks are, uh, at some, some level, I think there should be some. Um, sta- standard for. Maintain their properties if they're going to be growing five hundred square feet. Of, of space, as we know, within the last three years. We've had two major. Grow operations go up. Um. And smoke, um, no pun intended.
I have one of those. It grows into a death, who has the doctors. But.
So I, I'd like to see a step. So I'm not, you know, personally, me, I, I, I don't care if we have. These types of situ, you know, uh, operations and businesses in town, but that's. These types of situ-, you know, uh operations and businesses in town, but that's not the viewpoint of the town, so. I kind of take that position uh based on response to the community. So what I'd like to see is us. Who. Require some kind of assessment from the planning board. Um. As like the business license so that we we open the door for them to have to get checked out by the code enforcement officer in order to. Uh exist in town, which we can do. And require some kind of uh. Permit fee to help offset the code enforcement officers to to fire safety and and building safety. And then um. On a bigger scale. Uh. For somebody that might be in the mill, as an example, where there's a lot more space to to cookie cut and have. Numerous grow operations. Um I think there should be an aggregate license fee, so. If if there's two licensees that have the capability of growing five hundred square feet each, that would put the landlord at a thousand square feet and then they would fall into the ordinance. To have to get licensed.
Free strip.
Right? Uh and that's kind of how I went about. Making some adjustments to the current ordinance uh and recommendations.
Those comments like in this document.
Uh this one here, yeah. Um I did, I I I put. No, because that's something that we set at the other time, yeah. So I attached the ordinance, but it's something that would have to be discussed. If we're all in agreement to put this change forward. Um I'm not, I don't think that a five hundred square foot uh grow operation should be subjected to the same level of fees as. As the eight that we currently have licensed in town. Um.
Do we believe everything in one?
Yeah. So if you want, we think this kind of. Uh just go step by step and just uh. See if there's any changes that you want to make as we go through. But I don't think A is going to be a lot of changes that we're going to make that addresses home rule, addresses the marijuana title twenty two grow, grow period. Um.
These references are correct.
I did not verify that, but.
You might for it?
Yes. Oh, you mean it's what what I put in?
No.
Up here. I'm assuming that the the attorney had a heavy hand in in this. The original. Yeah, I'm not suggesting that we open up to retail or anything. Just this is just focused on the marijuana, medical marijuana.
The full section of two now.
Um. But we're in definitions.
Okay. So on C of definition, let's. This has been in place for three years now. This says or had received site from a building permanent approval for the use. Prior to the effective date of this ordinance. Would that really be necessary? Or should that be straight? Or does it have to stay?
So that that I believe Doug might have commented on that, but I I think that that's that prohibited prohibition prohibit.
Prohibition?
Yes, thank you. Marijuana businesses had to do with um the existing ordinance that was in place before this one was moved forward. Which uh those eight eight businesses had already been in front of the planning board. At that time.
Right, prior to this. This one.
Hmm.
They were that they had already been. Tell that one. There are.
But that allows them to, that that's a different uh licensing. So any anybody in town. If they want to. Uh so anybody in town can grow up to six mature plants at their home. But to move up to the five hundred square foot level requires a a state certification license. Um.
So. Just adding your comments, I think they're heading right direction here. Nothing's, nothing I. The will of the town, which event is these businesses. Nothing that you do should be in any way concerning expanding.
Correct.
So. Just when you're thinking about it, this is. Just clarifying your language to allow you additional. Opportunities, licensed facilities, etc. If not. You're not gonna, you're not gonna. Appreciate any more businesses. Growing. By anything you do except for possibly. The situation we have. Well. Where. A lot of discussion about the size of those. The language. Business there. For the. You.
Yes, I agree.
Okay. And the fee would be something we take up well. The minimum fee would have to be changed here, the minimum size didn't all make make recommendation one hundred and five hundred.
Right, but the attorney recommended against it. Um so. Right now, we've. For the fee structure, we pay, we we charge fifteen hundred dollars a license. So.
Three.
For a year. That's on, we've got. Twice. On that fee structure. Um. So. For the a thousand square foot group. Um. The the eight, I would be suggesting that we would change the ordinance so that it'd be six thousand dollars. As it stands now, six thousand dollars for the licensees and then six thousand dollars for uh the landlord. So um. We we realize. An increase that way because right now the landlord only gets. Twenty five percent of that. And um. Their business, and I'm not suggesting that we put the thumb on business, but um it's the biggest reason why we have a full time code enforcement officer.
To improve business.
Yeah. Um. So with the smaller units, um. You know, I don't know what that looked like, maybe five hundred dollars. I don't know, whatever the cost, just to absorb the cost of having. Uh fire chief and. Code enforcement officer review their their situation. Um. But in the situation that if there was, again. The license allows them to grow up to five hundred square feet. Then. If you have two in one building, now you're at that thousand foot threshold. That allows us to capture. More fees to help offset the code enforcement officer. There's nothing that stops it from happening now. You know, the the state state supersedes us when it comes to licensing on that, in in my opinion. So we might as well. Yeah, like the one thing that I'm unclear about is when I was reading Auburn and Turner's ordinance, it it looked like they may have put a limit on the on the amount, but I'm not sure that we're allowed to do that.
Auburn, yeah.
So. Um. So we're on D license requirements. Not sure if. So some of these things I I wanted uh. To review so that we could make sure that they're legal to ask, so that obviously we'll have to go through the attorney. I did add. Uh the language on on the the title chapters and the uh subsections that that reach, so um. For medical marijuana business licenses, a caregiver AC to tell twenty two, chapter five fifty AC. And then subsection twenty four, twenty three. Uh the next, the following sections after that is what meets the uh the requirement.
So. It might. This might be the right place to put it. Um. Would it make sense? To automatically have. The pre-licensed inspection scheduled by a specific date? Because we we do an inspection when they're applying, correct? Um.
Are you referencing the thousand square foot ones?
I guess, yes. I'm just trying to figure out if I'm in the right spot, if it's another.
Ordinance requires the grandfather. To to be licensed by the end of December.
And where is the license requirements for that? Is that in the section or is it a different section?
I think it's in J.
We'll wait then, we'll wait then, just make a mental note. I thought it was in this one, so, but I'm I'm recommending that we add. To the ordinance to capture the five hundred square foot.
Yeah. So. Right now, currently, there's no language that. That talks about that, so. As we go through each level. So I added um. In accordance to the town of Vassar marijuana ordinance, should a landlord or property owned contract lease allow multiple marijuana business license to the office of cannabis policy under chapter five fifty AC subsection twenty four, twenty three? And the aggregate of allowable growth space per the license exceeds a thousand square feet, the property owner shall be, one, be required to one license with the town of Vassarboro. And two, subject the property annual review by the town of Vassarboro code enforcement officer and fire chief. Three, pay licensing fees determined annually by the town of Vassarboro select board for each thousand square foot of applicable growth space.
Pretty different. Still good.
Um. Is there any any suggestions or changes that you make? All right. Uh F for licensing procedure, um I added a step two. Um. See if I read it right. Any any new marijuana medical marijuana business that falls within the maximum growth space of five hundred square feet of mature product. Shall apply submitted license to the town manager in writing using the form prepared by the town, including submission of the application to the town of Vassar planning board for site review considerations.
What's that?
That was in licensing procedures for E.
Okay, you you want to strike apply number two.
Where at, where?
Number two, the what you just read, shall submit license.
Shall.
Shall apply.
All right.
No, I'm just saying, is it? It's just a. It's quirky, it says.
No, it was, no doubt.
Submit a.
Sometimes my brain gets ahead of me when I'm writing, so.
That's fine, but is it, so product um. Shall submit a license to town or no?
Shall apply. Because that's how it works now, right? They have to apply each year.
Why?
All right, so remove the submit.
I would say shall apply to the town manager in writing using a form. Prepared by the town, including submission of an application.
Sure.
Just hmm like. I suppose. I mean, like, this.
Twenty four by twenty four would be four hundred and eighty, I think.
So is it like the size of this room or?
Yeah.
How?
Half this and half the.
Yeah.
At this.
Yeah.
This is like twenty five by twenty five.
Yeah, thirty mature plants.
Twenty by twenty five would be would be five.
Four foot panels.
Yeah.
Twenty eight this way.
Yeah.
I'm saying.
All happened from all the more.
And that's just the mature space, uh another five hundred square feet or so for total space for immature plants. You know, I never did follow up on that. I think we was talking about that, whether it's a thousand feet of. Mature or immature or a thousand feet total with the five hundred square feet of mature. I'll have to. Forgot to go back and look. Um. I didn't have any considerations for the next uh section until section F, which is the application submission requirements. Um. So this is, this is what captures the landlord, the language for landlords. Uh for the eight existing. Um licensees. In order for the grandfathered marijuana, which I probably is not the correct term to use anymore, but. Uh grandfathered marijuana businesses to satisfy the requirements of the town of Vassarboro marijuana licensing ordinance. Both the landlord and applicant slash tenant. Shall pay separate application fees as designated by the town of Vassarboro select board for each individual type of business.
Can you say existing marijuana business?
So there's eight businesses right now, but the landlords only pay for a single license. So that the intent is to. Require them to mirror each license. Okay, so this goes back to the town of Vassarboro allowing no more than the eight grandfathered marijuana license issued within the original marijuana ordinance approved by the town vote in twenty twenty one. Additionally, the town will limit the medical marijuana caregiver licenses to those who have licensed a maximum of five hundred square feet to more than more than ten. License preferences will be given to residents of the town of Vassarboro. That I'm up there, but. I'm not sure of that.
Auburn had you to be a resident.
They cannot allow or get any more business. So. Suggest previously.
Transfer ownership.
We, it's already in the ordinance. If there's a transfer ownership, we can't stop that. It's in there.
But you 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 can't create no business.
We can't stop. People that have licenses for five hundred square foot in this town. Period. The state has laid that out. We can stop people from growing but more than a thousand square feet per the ordinance. If everybody in the community wants to get licensed at five hundred square feet, there's nothing we can do about it.
Be medical.
Hey, yeah, right, but tha- that's what we're talking about. There's a ban on. On retail. Personal use. For sales. We're not allowing storefronts. We're not allowing any of that. It doesn't change. But we don't have anything that reviews uh that five hundred square foot kind of loophole.
I I apologize because I haven't read. Corrected one.
No, no worries, Doug. So no worries.
No, I I I mean, I'm glad you know I'm. Yeah, I'm passionate about.
No.
This sounds to me like you're creating something. So many residents, so many licenses for Vassarboro, like. Saying. There can be no more businesses created. Under. Terms of this one.
The pre, the one that's already on, that's voted on.
Yeah.
For those businesses over a thousand square feet of growth space, you are correct.
When these references with the residences for five hundred square feet. The difference is what the 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 residences for five hundred.
Where the problem is that you're allowing, now you're allowing everybody. In town. So to speak, to create, you know, get my medical license, start growing five hundred square feet.
It's already available.
No, isn't it?
Yes, it is. I will challenge you on that, Doug. The state of Maine will allow you to license to grow five hundred square feet in this community. There's nothing in our ordinance that.
As an individual.
Yes, and you can sell that.
Talking about the license here, license grow.
You can sell that. Up to two and a half pounds. To anybody within a two week period that has a medical license. If somebody has a five hundred square foot license in this community. And I also have a medical marijuana license, would like to purchase from them.
So or license grow.
To license to grow, and I as someone that has a medical marijuana license to buy. I can go to their home and buy directly from them. That is my understanding of the rule. So the ordinance that we did in twenty twenty one prevented people from over a thousand square feet from having their shops in town. But there is a caregiver per permit in the statute. That they can apply to the state, be licensed, get inspected, and they're good to go. And that's all we're trying to.
Verify it at the state level, Doug, that's not.
Well, the state is very vague and very fine with. They. Well, the ordinance was passed by the town. I mean, you know. So he's.
Of over a thousand square feet.
It doesn't say anything about a thousand square feet.
We can't supersede the state in many cases. Home rule does not.
Be more restrictive.
Home rule does not provide that. Blanket.
We went down that road once before, and I think it's because the word medical is involved. That was where it became a little bit.
I I can't, I'm not leaving. All the way.
We we've had this discussion before, and I remember it. It was the 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 word medical was the the distinguishing factor.
Very careful.
I'm not looking to expand these large businesses, and I I think there's a. I'm not looking to span these large businesses and I I think there's a need based on just the life safety and the fires that we've experienced.
Sure.
To keep an eye on these. And.
Just remember you can't. As far as I know, you can't even have access to the facility.
We don't have to license them. It's in the ordinance. But well, I mean, are you referring to the the ones that are the eight that are licensed now? It's it's literally a condition of the ordinance. If they don't want the code enforcement officer in there. Then we won't approve the license. And we have a code enforcement officer now that is very gung ho on. It requires the fire chief, police chief and the code enforcement officer to sign off.
Well, I want you to continue going.
So my, I mean, not to get contentious with Doug, I'm not, I'm just trying to trying to fill. A gap so that we can mitigate some of these issues as we move forward in case these become a problem because. I mean, I look at. Some of the larger buildings in town that may house.
I would just, I.
Go ahead.
I would just encourage you to be careful about any. Indication given while allowing additional.
Okay.
I think that's going to cost something.
So. Well, why don't we get? Make sure he gets a copy of this and he can do it. That's I guess that's the best thing. I mean, we're not solving it all here tonight. I think just just said it to you, yeah. Go through it. I mean, there will be a hearing. This is just a dry run on what Chris has done, the initial changes and getting our input as well. So.
Just because I have. Some of the questions I would have, knowing some of the situations that have come up that I've seen. Something. And I think it was China, they took floor and they divided it in town and then. Growing makes part of whatever. Instead of. Annually inspecting, can you? Is there some? Or a part of this that says. We will come in so many times a year. Not just once. Just to kind of check on things and make sure things are. Going above and beyond.
We have to give them notice when we do the inspection for the annual review. However. We are allowed. To do. Random inspections afterwards. We do not have any type of a schedule put down there, correct?
That just might be a wise thing.
I I think that would be handled more on administrative side of having the code enforcement officer.
But I'm just saying that. Another avenue to keep an eye on some. Some things that are.
So what other? One other thing that I wanted to add was uh no medical marijuana business shall be permitted to operate within a thousand square foot of any direction from marked property line in the basketball community school. And or any state of being licensed childcare business.
Yeah, the math by criminal justice, I mean.
So then um for clarity, for any medical marijuana caregiver license. Who falls under the town's thousand square foot licensing requirements. But are licensed by the state of Maine to maintain five hundred square feet of flowering plant shall submit. To a business license fee set by select board shall comply with the plan of board site review ordinance. Shall allow access for the code enforcement officer, fire chief or police chief. And then if a landlord shall seek space, I think this was the second spot that I added this in, it may not require to be here, but this refers to the aggregate. Any other comments for?
But he was putting five hundred feet of flower and more a thousand feet of immature.
Yeah.
Seafings.
I didn't really adjust anything for license terms or renewal. I don't think I made any other adjustments after that um. Because I wanted your folks' input as well since. You know, we have a lot to go through in the month of January here to get this to the attorney and then have a public hearing.
Safety and security.
Please.
We would typically address. Wonder if your ordinance should specify that. Basically, the forty four seven. Promise.
Let's have that in there on the monitoring.
I I think isn't your planning board, isn't the site review that you guys use kind of big enough that you guys can put those stipulations?
Well, we can't. And and do. You know, we already have. Just wondering if the additional. Fee for having that in your ordinance as well.
Where would you recommend that go in?
Well, under the safety and security thing. I apologize, I don't see that you're talking about your thing.
No worries.
Had some anecdotes and everything in this one. Typically. You know, the sense would be that that could be an audit. System that's opposed to. You know, a internal system that's notifying the owner that there's something going on that could be connected to a security system. Just proves the thought that you're looking at.
I think this fire chief has brought that up too.
Yeah, yeah.
That knocks boxes.
Yes. One of the one of the fertility ordinance ordinance re-read that was a requirement was a Knox box for the. Fire department to have access to.
Yeah.
Just makes sense that. You're not fighting with people over it. You're trying to save the business.
But you're getting some kind of a. Wanted to.
I know the on the recreational side, that's pretty prevalent. I thought I'd seen something that. Maybe I'm confusing it with what they have for Auburn.
Uh Auburn's. Here it is. Turners.
Yeah. Three A says. System will automatically know price kind of that. County sheriffs. So three A has that.
Implication on that A is that security.
Yeah, we could easily add the word fire maintenance because usually those security systems have a some sort of a rate of rise or smoke detectors wrapped into it.
Right. How would you think that would apply to those existing businesses as we as we make? Changes to. Safety. If we had.
These are not changes. When you do the annual renewal. The team goes out and inspect them every year.
Mm hmm. In theory.
It also says they shall have video surveillance capability of covering exterior and interior of the facility. The system shall be operated with continuous reporting. Four hours per day, seven days, twenty four hours a day, seven days a week. And minimum of thirty days, so. It doesn't have an off-site maintenance, but. I think if you just added fire to three A. Charity and fire. That would help out. And usually if you're paying a fee for a mo. You know, um. Monitoring anyways, it should I I I think it's included, but it wouldn't hurt to specify that because. It's like a hundred dollar sensor. You know, for each one. And it wouldn't be very difficult to modify if it's not there, but with the number of fires we had.
Yeah, there's. There's sorts of. Certain of these on an internal.
Yeah.
They state that uh. Such records shall be made available. When investigating a criminal complaint.
So this is probably a good start.
Yep. No. There's no mention of Knox boxes in here. That was Auburn. Um.
We can add them.
In my memory of a conversation with a gentleman down at the. Old mill was going in, he can walk to work, tossing in, he was volunteering to put one in. Yeah. But I'm pretty sure Auburn had it as a requirement um. Makes sense. I would put knock box and I guess just look at where Auburn's used it and. Safety and security. You know, it's security. Oh. Would be a definition of ranch fathers business. We use that several times.
Previously.
Yeah.
Any other changes you think we should see? Add consider. So now we just got to make sure the language is ready. Very.
Go ahead and send it off.
Well, we'll see. Yep, see what the attorney has to say.
Yeah.
Yeah, the comments.
You wanna? Do you want a little time to digest it, Doug, and?
Of course.
Wouldn't hurt to get any input or any questions before we send it off, the attorney versus after.
Yeah. We certainly can revisit it next meeting. The the plan was my my.
You know. I'm I'm liking most everything I hear. I'm just I'm very concerned about. Thousand square foot.
If we could, I think we would have and we were already down that road unless things have changed. It wouldn't hurt to see if it's changed. That would be a simple fault.
Well, I. I don't recall and I know we did get. We did get some kind of an opinion from the attorney, but I don't know that it was over up solid.
Which attorney was that last door? Get another opinion.
Yeah.
Wouldn't hurt.
I referenced a thousand square feet again. Just to. Pay respects to the existing. Ordinance. And. My intention. Is only. To. Review what what can be done in the town right now. And to in addition to the fire safety and the building safety is also look at air quality and address some of these. Other issues like uh I know that we can uh. Prevent grow operations from being around the school or what have you. And you know, those are just important things for me. I I don't know about other people in the community. Um and try to try to get those. Uh tighten that up a little bit. Not advocate for expanding private business or or grow operations is for recreational use. I recognize that that's the position of the community and.
Yeah, just, you know, I. Ask me what kind of in. Why what the town intended that was that no additional business would be. Would be created. Any any open door, then somebody's going to find it.
I mean, we can, we can send out. Uh a response to the attorney to see if we can. Uh if we have the ability under home rule to limit.
Yeah, limiting opening the work area license.
So this is the statute. Except as provided under this caregiver definition. Except as provided in section twenty four twenty six. A caregiver for the purpose of assisting a qualifying patient with a patient's medical use. Of cannabis may engage in the following authorized conduct as a caregiver. Is a resident of the state of Maine, is twenty one years of old. And has not been convicted of a disqualifying drug offense. A possess all harvested 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 did. Harvested cannabis produced by the caregiver's cultivation of cannabis plants under paragraph B. A one, this is the important part. Transfer up to two and a half ounces of harvested cannabis to a qualifying patient in one transaction. Can't stop that now.
But there's nothing about. You know. Can they? Can they do that in? You know, what size? Why is why is the five hundred square foot or the thousand square foot?
Because the state allows people licensed. To grow up to five hundred square feet to do this. And that's what we're trying to capture in this ordinance.
Up to five hundred square feet to do that. Why wouldn't the town be interested in licensing somebody that? Did that in in. You know, three of his square feet. I don't know how much.
How much time does it take and what's it going to cost us to send the code officer to chase it down? Versus what we get for licensing fee.
Well.
The smaller you get, the more frequency goes up and we've only got him forty hours. And I don't know how he busy how busy he is at this point, but from what I've seen, he's got a pretty full plate. So.
I can't imagine that all of.
It's not, and that's the point, but I just the 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 more. Further down you get in the minutia of what you're looking. The more time it's going to chew up and. You know. I guess get the second opinion. And and see if it can go down smaller. But then also realize. You know, um. Just what it's gonna, you know, how many of them are there that you might be hitting if all of a sudden it comes on radar? Um and then how much time is it going to take them just to do an annual inspection? And it's not just him because it would be the same guidelines that would require also the chief of police and the buyer chief, correct? So you're tying up three individuals.
They ever wants to do. The license to do that. I don't know if they can grow. Two and a half ounces.
Right now, without a license, they can grow up to six mature plants. If they want to each, so.
So you can do that in a heck of a lot smaller than five hundred square feet.
For personal use. But this is caregiver.
Yeah.
This license the person to sell. To somebody with a medical marijuana card. Or to sell to a business. So then they may not be having a storefront in the in the true sense. But they are able to use their home or what have you to grow five hundred square feet of mature plants. And then sell that product. Underneath the current ordinance.
I I just, I can't grasp. You know, how many licenses it's. Many customers or medical. Supply. From your house. In less than five hundred square feet.
I don't know, I'm not, but this is. But this is where that additional thousand square feet or up to a thousand square feet immature plants, you can have a rotation.
Essentially, that to me is a lot. Five hundred square feet growing space is a lot. It's a lot of plants. It's a lot of plants.
Thirty. I think is what the statute says.
You gotta have room for them to mature, otherwise.
Yeah, you've got, you know, I know you've got a, you've got a series of grown.
It's okay. It's gonna pass a straight face that.
Of course, I know. If they have a license, if they're a licensed caregiver and they're conducting. Business in the town of Vassar, they have to get a. So. Getting that. That was determined they committed it. Doing such under. Five hundred square feet.
That's what we're trying to do by adjusting this ordinance.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but when we went to get a list from the state, they would not give us names or addresses. They would just tell us account for town. They held it as confidential information. And so then is it, is it just Joe that's growing six plants and his? Son's got six and mom's got six, so now we've got. What, eighteen? You know, and it just smells because they've got a big family growing it, or is it somebody that's growing illegally? Well, the bottom line is it's legal. And you don't have the right to go in and look unless you get information otherwise. So I don't know if the code officer has the ability to contact the state and say, hey. We've got a suspicion here. Can you tell me if there's somebody registered or not? I mean, that there's been some. Roadblocks, I guess, or, or the information's been guarded. And it's been, you know, challenging sometimes to get. That level of detail.
They're willing to get on the. And you, and they're turning it into like.
Get a second opinion.
Yeah.
Doesn't hurt.
Yes. Doug, you make it interesting.
Don't worry, we'll come and visit the budget, at the budget meeting in a few weeks.
We're just trying to knock things off our parking lot, bud. All right, sign warrants.
Things still on your. Yeah, that's good.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
We're still working on that.
I didn't, I didn't see it on the. It's, it's a pocket. Those baseball.
Oh. Weird. It's alive and well.
Did you?
Forty one through forty four.
Forty one through forty four.